Thank you all again, welcome. My name is Christine Novello. I'm a governing board director and this year it's my pleasure to serve as the president of the governing board. We, I am joined today by all remaining directors on the governing board, so we certainly have a quorum. And before we get started with the business of today's special meeting, I will read you a quick, a couple of quick meeting procedures. The governing board and its committees conduct all their meetings in compliance with Arizona Planned Community Association open meeting laws per ARS 33-1804 and in concert with RCSCW bylaws, policies, and standing rules. Parliamentary procedures as outlined in the most recent edition of Robert's Rules of Order will also be followed in all meetings as appropriate, consistent with bylaw 3.07, Procedures for Owner-Member Meetings, and Standing Rules Number Two and Number Three. So just a quick reminder of how we do things, and now again, welcome. So today we're having a special meeting. It's very unusual that the governing board convenes in the middle of August. And, and again, I thank all of my fellow directors for taking time in the middle of the summer to return to Sun City West if they were, if they were traveling, and to hold today's meeting. Today's meeting is a special meeting to address the vacancy that's currently on the governing board due to the resignation of Dennis Horvath. I just want to stress a few things and give a few like rules of the road for today. Oh, and before I get started even further, good thing I made some notes, if you haven't done so already, directors, you may want to take a moment to silence your cell phones because we need to stay focused on the time at hand. And, and also before we get started today, because we really haven't had our first business meeting of the year, some of, some folks who are here or who are watching online may not know who we are. Real quick introduction of who we are by name, if folks cannot see our name plaques in front of us. So Director Turner, if you would start, we'll just do a quick round.
I'm Nick Turner. Do you need more?
No, that's fine, just name, social security number, just kidding, just your name, please, directors, thanks.
Good morning, I'm Rudy Grom, second year on the board, currently the vice president.
John Chatten, second year on the board.
As I mentioned, I'm Christine Novello.
Sandra Forsy.
Kaye Williams, the resident historian, over the last 12 years, I've been a director on the governing board for seven of those years.
Okay, I can't be that, but my name is Jolene Pajaskowski.
Ann Becknell, treasurer.
Thanks, directors, really appreciate that. So as we get started today, it's a special election, as I mentioned, we're moving into new business, really the only business of the day. Today, we're not conducting an election, just in case there's any confusion. Today, the business at hand is to consider how we will appoint a director to fill the current vacancy, and if we are prepared to do so, based on that first decision, we'll move forward and appoint a director to fill that vacancy. Couple of quick reminders, and some of what I'm doing right now is a bit of, I would, it's a bit of motherhood, apple pie, and stating things that may sound obvious to some of us on the board, but just again, in case anyone is watching for the first time, and we do have some directors who are new to the board, and we've not had our governing board training it. So again, not an election, the most important thing we're going to do here today is obviously make all our decisions in alignment with our duty, our fiduciary duty, we've all been sworn in and sworn to hold. It means, that fiduciary duty means we put the needs and the best interests of the association, the best interests of our corporation, ahead of our own beliefs, ahead of our own opinions, and really, we always put the association and the corporation first. That's our pledge, right? And we also pledge to each other, although again, we're a little early in the year, we haven't actually signed the piece of paper, we usually make a pledge of how we treat one another, but this, this board is so diligent and hardworking, we already met once on July 1st, and a quick organizational type of meeting. At that meeting, we agreed to treat each other with dignity and with respect, and to do the same for our fellow owner members. So that's one thing that I know I can count on my fellow directors to do, and please be assured, whatever your points of view are, whether you're a director or one of our fellow residents, you'll always be treated with dignity and respect by us. Again, this is a big question around sort of governance and law and so forth, we have a, we have bylaws for our association, we have policies, we have standing rules, I referred to some of that when I went through the meeting procedures. But just as a quick overview, we always put the law of the land comes first, where it applies, there's federal law, state law, local law, and then of course, we, we put our, our articles of incorporation, our declarations, our bylaws, and policies, and standing rules in that order. So the first thing that we did as we were organizing today's meeting, I actually went and got some legal counsel advice to ensure that I was interpreting all of the Arizona state laws, because I am not a lawyer, nor am I an elected government official, so I wanted to ensure that I had the best knowledge to guide this board as we go forward today and going forward. So, legal counsel gave us a couple of quick overviews in terms of interpretation. The most important thing, if it comes up for anyone, is that our bylaws are in direct accordance with Arizona state law for how a planned community functions, specifically how a planned community must replace, or fill a vacancy on its board. So when we read our bylaw according to our legal counsel, it is almost word for word the same as what the Arizona state law applies. So we're going to jump straight to that bylaw 4.17. So Terry, if you could pull that up for our directors, we have this in front of us, of course, but I'm going to read it just in case there's any ambiguity, right? So the first thing we're going to do here, we're looking at the relevant bylaw, which is Article 4, Chapter 17. It states at the top, unless otherwise provided by Arizona law, "Any vacancy on the governing board may be filled by the affirmative vote of a majority of the remaining governing board directors, though less than a quorum, or by a sole remaining governing director. The sole director left would then select another director, these two together would select the third, these three would then select the fourth, and proceed in this manner, until there are once again nine directors." So putting it in a little bit more common language, what it says is really that we, the governing board, the remaining directors, select someone to fulfill the role of the vacant, that's left by the vacancy. So it's up to us, a majority of the remaining directors, a majority of the eight people sitting here today would be five, so five votes yes to confirm any appointment. So just to make sure that, again, all of the directors are aware, but just so that our residents and so forth are aware, that's what we're looking at. The remainder of what's on the screen, as you can see, I'm not going to read every word, but you can read it yourselves. 4.17.1 is that when this appointment is made, the director will serve until the next June 30th, so in this case, when we appoint, that appointment will be through June 30th of The 4.17.2 applies if there are no remaining directors, so if we had a mass exodus or some tragedy that befell the board, and we needed to start from scratch as an association, thankfully, that does not apply today. 4.1.7.3 is, applies when there is a failure of someone who's elected to take that office, so if someone either declined, or heaven forbid, died before their term actually began, that's when 4.17.3 would apply. And again, thankfully, that has not occurred. In this case, we're replacing Dennis, who resigned after a little more than a year of service. So we're really left with looking at the bylaw opening paragraph, which is not very specific. So the first order of business, again, is for us to decide for ourselves how we want to proceed. I know that there's some words, that there are some folks, residents as well as board directors themselves, who may be looking at precedent or custom, you know, how have we done this in the past? So I'll tell you first what's happened in my tenure, we do have our resident historian, but we're not going to put Director Williams on the spot just yet, because I'll just tell you what's happened in my tenure. So in the, a little more than two years that I've served on the governing board, this is the fourth vacancy that we have worked to fill. And there is no consistent process by those, in those first two years, but we do have things that have occurred. In our most recent vacancy, which occurred last August, the board decided and ultimately voted to appoint John Chatten to fill the remainder of that year, and then John went on, as he just described, to run for and be elected to his own three-year term. So that's the most recent practice, and I believe that is something that is very fresh in everyone's mind. The next thing we did, or the one, the, another vacancy during my tenure occurred in February of 2024, when Director Harry Stanabine resigned. When Harry resigned, we were in the midst of an election that was coming up. So that was February, I believe, of 2024, and the board decided at that point to have the first, the top vote getter in the March election of 2024, to seat that person immediately to fulfill the rest of the year, and then go on to fulfill the rest of their three-year term, and that's Director Pajaskowski. The third way that's happened during my tenure was by appointment of someone that was just identified. In that case, that was June of 2023, and in the elections of 2023, we did not have the good fortune of having a contested election. We had three of us, myself included, Director Williams, and Alan Schlemmer, who all submitted nomination papers for four openings, so the board selected, appointed someone to fill the fourth one-year opening. So those are the three examples that I have in my personal experience, but I went back through as much as I could find of what has happened in the past. And there, there are so many different ways that the board has worked to identify the potential appointees, there really isn't one common practice, and you can see in our bylaws, there is not one common method that's stated in our bylaws. We do have a policy that we could go to if we fail to fill this today, and again, we'll, we'll talk about that as we go. So if we're not able to agree to an appointment, we can't, we do have a policy that would guide us on how to identify potential appointees. However, based on the, the bylaw itself and custom, we have a lot of different ways to go. The first thing that I, that I would like to quickly cover as a board, I mentioned that in February of 2024, the board decided to hold that position vacant for another month, because we were in the midst of an election cycle. There, there have been many times over the course of our 32-year history as a governing board, when the governing board has elected, has decided to do that, but it's usually when the vacancy occurs in the middle of the working year or closer to an election. In this case, the vacancy occurred in July, so that would give us six months to wait. And I'm going to ask the governing board now, by consensus, if possible, I do not recommend that we wait six months for the next election to fulfill, to fill this vacancy, I really believe strongly that we should be working to fill this vacancy now. So if you object to that, the words to state are, "I object." Otherwise, just a quick consensus, can we rule that one option of identifying potential appointees, may we rule that one option of waiting until next March, can we rule that off the table? Excellent. So at least that's one that we can do. So by consensus, we've agreed, that's not an option, and thank you for that. Now, before we proceed forward as well, a, a quick point, because we haven't had our training on Robert's Rules just yet, let's keep, let's agree, folks, we do follow Robert's Rules, we're going to try to keep this as simple as possible. Toward that end, in our packets that the governing board has, we did, I think they're in here, right, Karen? Yes, on the back, we're trying to say, so on the back of our agendas, there are a couple of potential motions that we've templated out. This is, so that those of us who may not be as familiar with Robert's Rules and how to formulate a motion, this gives us some ideas. None of these are assigned, none of them are required for use today, but if you choose to use them, just know that our parliamentarian, our legal counsel, we, and I have all reviewed these, and this gives us some of the, the words that we need without stumbling. Those of us who are returning to this role can attest to the fact that you may think you're clear-headed, and you can speak extemporaneously off the top of your head, but when you're in front of a microphone trying to articulate a motion, it gets more jumbled up than you may imagine. So at least you have these in front of us, these are not the only motions that you can make, but there are a few templates. So again, that's Robert's Rules, let's please try to keep it simple for ourselves and for our owner members as well today. So with that, I've covered bylaw 4.17, I've covered the, what we have for some of the ways that we've filled these in the past, these vacancies, and yeah, a quick note on some of our Robert's Rules. So with that, I turn it over to the board to start discussing how we want to proceed in terms of procedure today. How will we identify potential appointees? Anyone want to start?
Would be a motion.
No, it does not need to be a motion, this is simply discussion on new business item 2.01.
I'll start.
Thank you, Director Pajaskowski.
Okay, so in the last two times we filled this, we have filled this position with people that have run for the board and that didn't make the board, because we had excess number of people running for the board. Last year, we had 10, the year I ran, we had eight, the year you guys ran, you had three. So obviously, in the past, we never had that waiting list for us to look at, right? And that's how John Chatten got on, because John Chatten was the fourth vote getter, and he was the next waiting list person to get onto this board. And so I really feel that if we don't go through our waiting list that we have, we have six candidates that did not make this board, that we, we need to look at them and say, okay, we need to at least offer it to them, maybe they wouldn't be interested, but we have to offer it to them. I believe John was offered, if he's willing to come and serve, even though he didn't make it, and he said yes.
So thanks for the, I, I did try to point that out in my introduction, right, that we, that is how we identified John as a potential appointee last year, that is true. There have been many other times in the past when the board elected to not do that, it's not required, but it's certainly one of our options, right? So, and, and again, it's the kind of thing that, we're not offering something, we will make an appointment, if the person that we appoint is not in the room, because it is mid-August, right? So if the person we appoint is not in the room, I will contact that person and ensure that they are still willing and interested to serve. So to your point, we have six, we have six names for people who ran last year, and two of those folks actually wrote to us proactively. We have another resident who also wrote in, but we'll talk about the who after we agree on the procedure. So again, I just wanted to point out, we do, we have done that in the past, but in the more recent past, we did do that for John, right?
Right.
And when you, when we appointed the next highest vote getter as a board, we did not know the outcome of the election yet, but we felt at that point, and many boards prior have done that as well, we, we said if the, the election process, the campaign is underway, whomever is the top vote getter would be seated, and that's, you are correct.
Correct, but the other thing too, is that we haven't had a waitlist. When's the la, I mean, we've, in the last two elections, we've had waitlists, right, of people.
Yeah, the, the election of 2022, 23 was contested, there were several more before that, but that one in 2023, you're exactly right, I mentioned myself, was not contested. So when we, when the board voted to fulfill the, to fill the opening for 23, 24, the board could have gone to the year's prior election as well and did not. But you are correct, Director Pajaskowski, for the past two vacancies, in my tenure, the most recent ones we've had, we went to those election results.
Okay, and I can also make it a point.
And then it's, and then we'll go to Kaye, after you're done.
Sorry. So, um, this was, I don't, whenever Sue Fitzsimmons was president, there was a vacancy, and she just appointed it, okay? She never went out to the community, which our L9 said, I called her, I questioned her, and she said she has that choice to do that, which is great, except for, is that why we don't always have residents run for the board? Because the board does what they want to do, so, in this, in that sense, I mean, we have, we have people waiting for.
So thank, yeah, thanks, Director Pajaskowski, your insights are noted, let's, we're going to try our best to not look backward or criticize past practice, but this board has agreed to work independently and with respect for one another, and it's okay to dissent with one another. But we're here today, working in an open meeting, and it's the first time we've had this discussion in an open meeting during my tenure. So I'm very grateful that we're here, working with full transparency. Director Williams?
Yeah, so I'd just like to remind all of the directors, we work for the community, they don't work for us, that's not the way it ought to be. We ought to pay attention to what all of our owner members are telling us they want. It's sometimes been overlooked to give credit to the hard work that so many of our residents donate in time on committees and other things. It bothers me a little that we would totally disregard what the most recent voters told us, and what their feelings were, and the votes, and I realized 10 was an unusual number.
Yes.
But we're here representing a whole lot of people, that's a big responsibility on every one of us, not just for filling this vacancy, but for all year, and so I applaud the fact that we are here today and can feel free to get the feelings out right now, and I appreciate that you've arranged for us to do that, thank you.
You're welcome, Director Williams, and it is important for us to note, for ourselves and maybe even for posterity, that this is the way a board works, right? We work together, no, no one's making, unless it's explicitly given, no one's making the decision alone. And we are very grateful to have so many folks who have expressed an interest in serving on the board. who have expressed an interest in serving on the board. So thanks for that. Director Turner?
Yes, I was just wanting to respectfully disagree with the term waitlist. They're not, it's not a waitlist. It's a group of candidates who chose to run, have offered their time to the community. And we do, you know, we should give them respect for that. But it's not a waitlist. It's a group of candidates who've got insufficient votes to get elected to the board. And we should also bear that in mind when we, when we make a decision.
Very true. I also mentioned, when I was talking about custom and process and things that have happened in my tenure, I should also mention that in every case that I can find, not just during my tenure, but prior, and Director Williams can assert or tell me if I'm incorrect here, but in every case, an appointed, someone who's appointed to fill a vacancy, in whatever method was chosen to identify that potential appointee, the board has held that vote in an open meeting. I hope I'm correct on that. But certainly during my tenure, every opening, although the appointees were identified a bit differently, always in an open vote in front of the community at a special meeting. So again, that's why we're here today, should we get to that point. So your inputs noted. Thank you, Director Turner. Director Chatten?
I just think it should be noted, since all the directors have been notified, but there were three people that have expressed an interest in filling this position. And I think those three should be disclosed to the general public.
I do agree. I wanted to avoid talking about the who's, but I'm happy to do that now. Or we can talk about the procedure first. Two of our candidates from, if you will, from our most recent election chose to write to us. It doesn't mean they're the only the two that could be considered, right? I'm just saying that Dennis Hansel and David Bennett both wrote to us proactively and expressed their willingness to step up and serve if appointed. We were also, we received an input from Alan Schlemmer, who was a director for the Association for a Little More Than a Year. And we can talk about some of the specifics, should we get to that. But we're grateful to all three of you for expressing that interest to us proactively. And again, it doesn't mean that these are the only three, but that way we certainly here to be transparent with no secrets at all. So thanks for that. So we haven't heard from a couple of the directors yet. Anyone else want to weigh in on? Oops, Director Forsy.
I appreciated what Director Williams said and just always keeping in mind, as a director, to always listen to the people because it's not about me and to not, never come with my own agenda, but to come with the masses of what I know.
Thanks for that. I really appreciate it. And I hope and assume that all eight of us feel the same, right? That we're putting aside any personal agendas and we're here to serve the community and to make the decisions that are in the community's best interest. Director Graham?
Thank you, President Novello. I really think we need to look to what our primary purpose here is. One of our purposes is we establish policy, policy for the community. Back in 2014, for whatever reason, a board established policy LO9, and it was reviewed in 2021. So as of today, it is a standing policy approved by the board. That policy adequately covers all the avenues needed to get us to the point where we would have volunteers, people that we could nominate. Two of the most important things are, one of them, we've done that already. We've announced this vacancy. But one of the critical things is, and we've heard even from Nick about this waiting list, that's not true. Every one of our 27,000 owner members is eligible to be appointed to the board this year. We need to tell the people they are eligible if they are interested. And I believe policy LO9 covers all those bases, and we should follow policy LO9.
Thanks for your views, Director Graham. I'm going to read Section 1.0 of Policy LO9. The filling of vacancies is the governing board's responsibility under Bylaw 4.17. This policy establishes a procedure for filling any vacancies on the governing board when following Bylaw 4.17 fails to fill a vacancy. So today, we're here to fill the vacancy. If we're unable to agree on an appointee, then our option is to go to policy LO9. Per our legal counsel, it would be the governing board's discretion if we chose to follow policy LO9 from the start. It's entirely up to us. But it has been articulated by others that we have recent election results. We have members that have already stepped forward. So that's what we're here to discuss during this first agenda point is our procedure for how we're going to proceed forward to identify appointees. But thanks for your views. Director Becknell, this leaves you. Do you have anything? You don't have to feel compelled to chat, but you're welcome to.
Well, I agree with several of the comments that were made. And I think that we're here today to try to fill the vacancy. And we should try to do that, if at all possible, to avoid a continuation, which I think, looking at LO9, as I've read it, could take several months to get us where we need to be. And I would like to see us get that vacancy filled sooner than later.
Thank you. And Director Becknell, it's, again, we're so fortunate throughout the Association. We have lots of people with a lot of talent. On this board, we have a ton of talent. But we also have a director who has served the community for many years and in many times. Director Williams, I believe you were a board director or were present the last time LO9 was used. How long of a process was that?
It was a nightmare. It actually prolonged almost four and a half months, as I recall, from start to finish. And it got out of control. And I would not recommend ever going through that process again because you'd waste half a year. I mean, let's face it, if you did that right now, we might have a decision by March. And at the end of March, we'd be electing a new director. So I mean, it doesn't make sense. But yeah, I was a part of the thing from start to finish.
I'm sorry. Thank you for being so candid about that.
No, because it really was not a, an appropriate way to fill the vacancy, in my opinion.
I.
And we did, like then, like now, we had other people who were interested. So it wasn't a matter of saying, oh, gosh, nobody wants to be on there. We'll have to go beat the bushes and find someone. That wasn't how it worked. So to me, that was not the best possible way to fill the vacancy.
Appreciate that. I also appreciate, though, you know, the sentiment that we did notify all owner members. It's tough because it's summertime and we're all busy being retired and enjoying, hopefully, enjoying Sun City West and enjoying our lives. But regardless, it is a long process. Again, my guidance to the board is similar, that I do want us to move forward as quickly as possible. That's why I'm grateful you were able to find time in the middle of the summer. Wasn't, I didn't think that we'd be able to find everybody together in Sun City West at one point, but I'm glad we were because this is very important. We have so, the governing board always has a lot to do every year. This year in particular, we are the stewards of a new strategic plan. It is vitally important that the governing board, this governing board, works on that strategic plan. We are overseers, true, but this is our plan. This is our strategic plan. This year is our first year living with that. It's really important to hit the ground running. That was why I'm so passionate that I did not want us to wait six months for the next election results to come in. And while I'm always, and we will make a decision as a group, as a team, right? But I'm always someone who's very much a proponent of involving as many in our community as possible. In this case, I do want us to move forward quickly. So I would have to agree with you for what that's worth. So thanks anyway. Directors, before we open it up to any residents who may want to comment, anything else that you wanted to add at this point? Do our residents have anything that you want to contribute before we start making a decision on how we're going to move forward? Director Forsy, any comments online yet? Those of you who've been following the governing board may remember, I'm always like the person who's looking at the comments. So sorry about that, Director Forsy. But if you could read that out for us, please?
This is from member 133, 113, Mary Gannett. If you really want to listen to the members, it seems you would pick the person who got the most votes in the last election selected by the people, not someone the board chooses. And then there's one comment after it. This one, she didn't put her member number. It's Roberta Davidson. It is in my understanding that bylaws take precedence over policies.
Thank you, Director Forsy. So the first one, thank you for the comment to Mary Gannett. We're aware of your sentiments. We will, we will always make the decisions that are in the best interests of the Association. The second comment was pertaining to bylaws over policies. And yes, I quickly covered that order of precedence. Bylaws always take precedence over policy. So we'll follow the bylaw first. If, in this particular case, the legal counsel has advised us that it's really up to the board to decide how we wish to proceed to fill this, to make this appointment, to fill this vacancy. But thanks for the comment. So now to our in-room commentary, please. Please introduce yourself, although some of us know who each person is. Name and rec. card number, please.
Good morning. My name is Ronald Petron, rec. card 141369. I would suggest, rather than look at members in general, whether they were runner-ups in previous elections or not. Alan was a duly officiated, duly elected member of the board, resigned for personal reasons, which now, having stated that he's willing to rejoin the board, have resolved themselves. So I would recommend, rather than picking a runner-up or general member that we go with, someone who is duly elected in the past. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion. And this feels silly, but would you please introduce yourself?
No worries. Lisa Fines, 123774. Nice to see all the directors. Thank you for taking time out of your summer vacations and your hiatus. So just a couple of things, Christine, or President Novello. First off, the one area where we had a meeting when President Fitzsimmons and this issue came up and regarding their, us appointing a director when we had a vacancy, that was not done openly. It was done behind the scenes, I guess, if you will, because we had to do it online. We had to do via Zoom. Everybody was, you know, during the very tail end of COVID. So that unfortunately, we had to do. So we could not do that on, you know, in front of everybody. But it was done exactly how Director Pajaskowski said. She just brought in her appointees. And we did not look at anybody go to the residents. We didn't throw it out to the residents. And it was brought up, L9 was brought up. So just, you know, that open note. I do believe that it, there was a long period of time where we never had enough people even running in our elections. You know, we had two and three people. And then the last few elections, we've had eight and 10 people, which is very exciting. I believe that we, you should be looking at the remaining people. And even if you vote them down one by one, and the board chooses not to, if for whatever the reason, you vote them down one by one. And then Alan Schlemmer, Director Schlemmer, is returned to the board via your vote. And that's 100% your choice. But I think because there are people that the residents of this community voted, and as you pointed out, Director Chatten, I think, was it once or twice, Director Chatten, that you were brought back? Just once? And then you were put on, you were voted in in the last election, right? So, yeah. And he's been a huge asset to this community. So that, again, just my opinion. I think that we should listen to the residents.
Thank you very much. We have one more. Please take your time. We have another person who's approaching the podium. You can sign in afterwards. Thank you.
My name is Hugh Martin, 122481. Simply, I think the most equitable way to take care of the situation is to give the position to the last person that ran for this position, that garnered the most votes. If there are people out there that suddenly have a burning desire to be on the board, this should be a lesson to them that they should follow the policies and get on the ballot and get elected.
Thank you, sir, for your input. We, as a board, we always make a big plea to people to get involved and to run for the board. So we do need to listen to that and to listen to that input. I believe we had, we have another comment that came in. Director Forsy will read that.
This is from Mary Gannett. Nothing personal against Alan, but I believe he was appointed and not elected.
Actually, by, even though it was not a contested election, Alan Schlemmer, myself, and Kay Williams are all considered to be elected in March 2023 for a three-year term. So it was not an appointment, it was an election. Or that's the, that's how it's considered. The appointment that was made was for the fourth opening of that year. And so there was an appointment that was made to, for a one-year term as well. And that was Terry Hammond was appointed by the new board as a one, for a one-year term in that year. But thank you again for your point. Yes.
Hello, Chris Waller, 140558. I find the discussion about the election's interesting. I don't have, I don't have an answer. I don't know what's right and I don't know what's wrong. I think what's most important to me is that we have individuals who have stepped up and said, I'm willing, and hopefully they're able, but I'm willing to be considered. And whether, where they stood in the election or where they didn't stand in the election, notice we didn't talk about, if, when we say, listen to what the people said, that would almost say the next person, period, whether we thought they were the right fit or not. The other part of my thought is that the people did speak. Some people may have said, I don't want this individual, right? So we have to decide, what are we listening to? Is it, is it, you know, it's not cut and dry. I think if you have people that are interested in taking the position, regardless of election or not, and you are aware of now, and I do agree with the urgency of trying to get this done instead of waiting four or five months, which maybe you might want to consider having a consensus on that. But the.
We did establish a consensus on that. Thank you.
Not, you established waiting till the next election, right?
Yes.
But rather to go to policy.
Ah, yes, we will, we will consider that. Thank you, Mr. Waller. Go ahead.
But the, but I think it's, times have changed. It's 25, 26 a year that we're talking about. So the issues, the opinions of the people that are interested should be heard and see if it's best for the Association.
Thank you, Mr. Waller. I think, again, that's the, you know, a key question here is how we proceed in terms of the order of making the appointment motions, to be really honest. So the first thing that we can consider, as Mr. Waller alluded and as Director Graham had introduced, is whether or not we do want to consider. had introduced, is whether or not we do want to consider moving to, directly to policy L-09 or not. So we could either make a motion to that effect or establish it as consensus. So I'll start off, again, by looking for consensus on that point, to proceed by appointment by 4.17. That would still give us the opportunity, we still have to discuss, you know, who we, the order by which we consider names, but that would move us directly into an appointment mode versus using, directing, jumping to policy L-09. You'll see in your packet, there's a motion to that effect if we need it, so I'm going to look for consensus on this one, that we jump straight to the appointment process. Does anyone object? So with that objection, we'll put it to a voice vote. So we'll, is there any discussion on that point, by the way, that we would move to policy L-09? We need a motion, actually, I'm sorry. I take that back. So there's a motion in our packet if we want to move to policy L-09. Director Graham, would you like to make that motion, and then we can discuss and move on?
I move the Board of Directors follow the procedures outlined in policy L-09 in determining a suitable candidate to be appointed to fill the vacancy on the board.
Do I have a second? There's no second, so there is no motion. Thanks for noting your objection, but I believe we're moving forward by consensus. Any other objections? Thank you, directors. So we're moving forward with the appointment process. Now it's a question of, in what order do we want to make that? Do we need to continue that discussion, or are we ready to move forward to appointment? We've had some discussion about whether we want to consider going through the election results first, or whether we use the folks who volunteered. Director Turner?
I believe that one of the people who put their name forward could command a majority of this board, and I'd like to propose a motion to nominate that person.
Before we get there, I think we're still on Agenda Point 2.01. Sorry, Director Turner, so before we move to that motion, thank you. Any other discussion before we move forward to motions to appoint on how we want to proceed? Again, a question here is whether we start with the election results or not, and whether we feel that there's a person to do that or not. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak up on that point? We've had a lot of passionate discussion about it. Director Piuskowsky?
I believe that we should go through the process of looking at the candidates that did not make our board. We need to listen to our residents. We need to at least offer it first, and I understand that there's one of the candidates out there that has already been on the board, but John, you weren't on the board, and you were appointed that way, because you were the fourth candidate. I was never on the board, and I was put on the board because I was the top boat getter. So I just think that we really need to listen to the residents. We're talking not a full term, we're talking one year, nine months, basically. And then if that person wants to rerun, that would be great, because that's then, and that's what happened with John. John was appointed, and then he decided that, hey, he likes this gig, and he's going to rerun. Is that how that worked, John? But anyway, I just think that we really need to listen to our residents, because if we don't, it's, it's a shame on us board's situation, because I think that you're going to find that people are like, why bother? That's just my opinion.
We've had a number of folks who said the same. I believe Director Williams expressed a similar, well, in a different way, expressed a similar viewpoint. And again, before we move forward to nominations, go ahead, Director Turner.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if we, if it's appropriate for us to go down a list of names of people who have not contacted us again? Some of those people have contacted us and said they're interested in serving, and a lot of them have not contacted us and suggested and said that they are interested in serving. So are we going to start taking votes on people who didn't win an election, who've expressed no further interest in serving? I think that's a waste of time. Now we can, we can start with...
And I believe, John, you might have said something, I'm sorry, I'm going to continue to use first names by accident, so apologies, Director Turner, Director Chatten, you had said something similar, I believe, right? I can't, your comments earlier were to consider those at least the three.
I just wanted, I wanted to note that there were three people that showed an interest, two who ran for the election, and one person who also ran for an election and was elected to the board.
Right. From, yeah.
Well, I, this is, I'm really conflicted on this. I appreciated that I got my position because Alan resigned. If he had had any idea that he would recover everything that he did recover, he would have never resigned. So I really think that, that touches me a lot, and the amount of things that he's done working with Torch and the history of Sun City West. You can, I appreciate those that, since I was the fourth, and that that's why I was appointed, I understand the sentiments, sentiments that we should go down this list, those who were not elected. But I think, I think Alan's service in previous election mean more to me, so there you have it.
Thanks, Director Chatten. Director Forsi?
You know, as we, as we stated a little while ago, that bylaws are recognized first over rules and procedures, I would like to make a motion. I move the Board appoint a person to fill the current governing board vacancy in today's meeting as described in bylaw 4.17.
Does anybody second that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Karen? Well, that was, that was what I was about to say, but, but since a motion was made and seconded, we did already reach consensus to that point. So I, now that a motion's been made and seconded, I don't think we need to vote on it, am I correct? I'm consulting Karen, who's our second parliamentary, well, not official parliamentarian, but our guide on this today. So, so with that, I don't believe we need to call that to a vote since we already had the consensus, but thank you, Director Forsi and Director Turner. So, so now we're moving forward to the, to the process, and we're moving forward to 2.02, right, where we are actually going to be making appointment motions. There are a couple of ways that we can proceed forward here. We will make the motions out loud, we can, we will discuss and deliberate, and then, and again, unless, unless the board decides otherwise, we will hold a voice vote for each of those appointment motions. So now, yes, Director Chatten, I'm not sure which of you guys raised it first. I think, actually, Director Turner, I'm not sure which of you went first, frankly. Do you want to flip a coin? Go ahead, Director Turner.
I move that the governing board appoint Alan Schlemmer to fill the current governing board vacancy. The appointee's one-year term is effective immediately and will end June 30th, 2026.
I second it.
Okay, made by Director Turner, seconded by Director Forsi. So the floor is open for discussion at this time. Oh, apologies. I'm out of practice, too. So Director Turner, you made the motion, so you can explain that motion first, and then it's open for discussion.
I don't know for certain, of course, but I believe that Alan could command a majority vote of this board to be appointed, and I think going through and rejecting up to six other candidates is an embarrassment for both this board and for those candidates. If this motion fails, then we can do that if we wish.
Thanks for the sentiments and for your input. It shouldn't be an embarrassment to, to do those sorts of things, but since we're talking about our neighbors and colleagues, and in some cases, friends, it can be awkward at best. I can appreciate that sentiment.
Yes, I apologize for my use of the words.
That's okay. Anyone else, before I contribute anything else? Director Williams?
I think in light of this, I would like to request a ballot vote rather than a voice vote.
So noted. Karen, I believe, do we need a motion to that effect, or can we do that by consensus as well? So again, a written ballot rather than voice ballot, although we always want to be transparent, this may, since this is something that is sensitive, as we just mentioned, right? We're talking about our fellow residents and neighbors, and in some cases, potentially friends or otherwise, so if it will help us feel more comfortable voting in the best interests, that's what we do. So are there any objections to making the votes on this and any appointees that may come after? Any objections to doing that by paper? Director Piuskowsky?
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand this. So Alan is up for, so if he gets...
There's a motion on the floor to appoint him to fill, yes.
Okay, so do we also have to have the motion on the floor to, for the other two people that...
No, one motion at a time.
One motion at a time, so, okay.
If you, and you, and you did disagree before, so you can speak your mind here to say that, you know, you, well, you could, a yes vote would appoint, or no vote is no, and then we, if the noes, if we do not carry the vote, then we would go on to consider other nominees. I'm sorry, appointees. When we get there, Karen, we will explain that. Any other discussion from the directors? Before we throw this open for community input, I'm going to add mine. This is a very serious decision that we're making, and it requires very serious deliberation, as I said in the opening. I'm going to add that I mentioned that this is a very important year. We have even more on our plate than usual, because this is our first year with a new strategic plan. This board, in our meeting on the first, voted to ask Alan Schlemmer to come to our first meeting to give us input on other communities in the United States and our competitors, because we viewed Alan, as I recall, as someone who is very knowledgeable and expert on that topic. Alan did serve us with distinction for over a year, and as Director Chatten pointed out, he did unfortunately have a terrible accident. He's allowed us to say that, right? He had a terrible accident a year ago, and by the grace of God, he's here and recovered beautifully and quickly, so we're most of all grateful. I'm personally grateful that that happened. I'm sure we're all happy for that. But again, when I look at making decisions that are in the best interests of our community, I want to remind us that we, the eight of us sitting here unanimously agreed to invite Alan to come and advise us on a topic that is very important to us. So when I look at all of our prospective residents, including our candidates that put in so much time and effort to run, and we've spoken about how important it is for, in terms of looking for someone who will immediately make a difference, a positive difference for our community, I think it's very important to note that specific qualification. And the experience does matter in this particular case, in my view. So that being said...
Madam President.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
As I recall, it was you who brought up Alan's name to be put on the workshop meeting. It didn't come from the board, set to start with, just a point of information.
Oh, that's true.
You were the one that brought it up at the meeting and said, gee, we've got a bunch of new people, I think I've put this on the agenda, he's a very good presenter.
Right. I think as the meeting minutes will show as well, I had said we would put, we were considering adding him to our training, and it was Director Piuskowsky who suggested that we consider adding the topic of interest to our workshops so that we could all benefit. You're right, I did bring that up, because it was something that, for me as an individual, I wanted to see and meet with Alan to view all that. I asked if the board wanted to have that same knowledge. We agreed and said, let's open it up to the community at large. So thanks for the clarification, Director Williams. Anyone else on the topic of appointing Alan Schlemmer? Are there any comments from our residents? Anything online? So as Director Chatten just suggested, it's time to call the question to vote. We did say that we would do this by paper, so Karen, if you could please pass out the votes. Your vote would be yes or no, and if you choose to abstain, leave it blank. Excuse me, Karen, please stop. We did have a comment that just came in, I apologize.
This is from Mary Gannett. She says, "You are doing a disservice to the community by not selecting the person who most recently was selected by the residents." Listen to the residents, please.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate your comment. We haven't selected anyone. We are appointing someone or taking a vote to potentially appoint someone now, but thank you. And now, Karen, I believe we can proceed. Apologies, Karen, we have another comment from Director Graham.
I believe in this case, we need to appoint a teller to actually count the votes.
We do have that option, that's true. So for those of us who are here in the audience, for residents who are here, would, would someone be willing to step forward and monitor the outcomes? Although I know who this is, because Kathy Estes is the chairperson of our Elections Committee this year. Oh, and we had Jack already, so we can have two tellers. And so we'll note, Jack, if you could also step forward with Kathy, we'll have two people observe. So we'll read back, I just realized, I was reminded by our secretary, we did not read back the motion, so the motion was made to, by Director Turner. So Director Turner, please read back your motion, and I'll repeat the directions one more time.
I move that the governing board appoint Alan Schlemmer to fill the governing board vacancy. The appointee's one-year term is effective immediately and will end June 30th, 2026.
Thank you. A yes vote would confirm that appointment, a no vote is against, a blank vote is an abstention. When we're ready, please fold it in half and place it in front. We're ready to collect, Karen. For residents unfamiliar, the teller role is someone who will observe the counting of the vote and ensure that it is accurate. and ensure that it is accurate. Thank you, Karen. The votes are in. We have five votes yes, one vote no, and two abstentions. Since we have five votes yes, that means a majority of the remaining directors have voted to confirm Alan Schlemmer for the position of governing board director for the remainder of this fiscal year. Congratulations, Alan. Well, directors, that concludes Agenda Item 2.02. But we are moving on to director comments now. So for Agenda Item 3, we'll start with Director Turner, and we'll go around the room, the table.
I'd just like to say, it's been, it's an honor to be elected, and I am looking forward to serving out my full term as a governing board director.
Thank you, it's an honor to have you all. Director Graham?
Nothing to add.
Director Chatten?
Nothing to add.
Director Forsy to add, thank you.
No comment yet. No comment.
I want to say congratulations to Alan. I worked with him for the past four-plus years at Torch, and saw what dedication he brought to the community. And I also watched multiple meetings, governing board meetings where he was present on the board. And I saw how he interacted with the members of the board. And I look forward to working with him on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, directors. This is a very difficult meeting to both organize and conduct. So I really want to thank my fellow directors for not only making time, but also for serving and for contributing openly. I look forward to the comments that were alluded to here. You're always welcome to make those comments in an open meeting, but again, you can certainly call them after the fact. So now, that being said, we're also open for resident comments. So if there are any comments in the room?
We have one comment online. Tim Hurley, 120454. Congratulations on appointing the best candidate.
Thank you for your views, Mr. Hurley. We have a resident at the dais as well. Although you've already introduced yourself, a quick introduction would be appreciated, thanks.
My name is Hugh Martin, and my number is 122481. And I just want to speak briefly about some confusion that exists, believe it or not, in Sun City West. I specifically mean over Palm Ridge, there's a sign, new sign, that says, let me read this correctly. Pedestrian traffic only. So when you park your vehicle in the parking lot and you start walking toward Palm Ridge, there's a sign that says pedestrian traffic only. But if you go a little further, get closer to the building itself, there's another sign that says, no unauthorized vehicles beyond this point. So my question is, if there's no vehicles allowed on the driveway, why do we have a second sign telling them about which ones are authorized, when actually, none of them are authorized by the first sign you encounter? Just saying.
Hugh, oh, please continue, and then I'll answer.
Yeah, maybe someone can look into that, I don't know. Or maybe it's me. And the other question I have is, there are rules that are posted on the wall on the walking track. And they're a little confusing for two reasons. There's two signs identically the same, and they're put on the walls. And one of the rules is you can't stand on a walking track. But the problem with that rule is that if a member wants to read the rules, he or she has to stand three tracks away from the sign. So those with excellent eyesight could probably read them. But there's 15 rules, so it's a little difficult that far away to read them. The other problem is that there are people walking on the walking tracks. So if you're standing there and you're trying to read the sign that's on the other side of the walking tracks, you might be able to do it, but for the fact that there are people walking on the track. So I noticed yesterday when I walked, that one of the signs was taken down. I don't know why. When they took it down, some of the walls went with it, or they did some damage by taking it down. So I don't know whether that was done by irate owner or whether it was done by the staff. Nevertheless, there's one sign that's still in existence there as of yesterday morning. And there's only five rules that I have a little issue with.
Hold on just a moment. Your two-minute time is up, so I just need to, by protocol, ask the directors for permission to allow you to continue. Okay, please continue. I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir, go ahead. Yes, go right ahead, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, I look at rules as a work product, and I think that rules and signage are there for a purpose that's to communicate and convey information. So of the 15 rules, none of them are numbered, incidentally. I took the liberty to number them myself. Number two says, no running. Please utilize the outdoor walking track at R. H. Johnson for running. The problem with that is that the track over at RJ Johnson is a walking track. It says it's a walking track. So I don't know how you can tell people they can't run on one track, which I agree with, but they can go over and someplace else and run when it says it's a walking track. If you want people running there, maybe they should put a sign there saying, walking and running. Just saying. So the number four rule is a good one. It says, be courteous and announce to slow walker when you are about to pass them to avoid unnecessary collisions. Well, I think the only necessary collisions are those in chemistry. So I don't think it really applies unnecessary collisions. But nevertheless, that's what the sign says. And I'll be honest, I've done a lot of running in my life. I've done a lot of walking in my life, and I've never seen this rule. It's like telling people when they're driving an automobile down the 101, if they're going to pass another vehicle, they have to honk the horn. Because if they don't honk the horn, there might be a, quote, unnecessary collision. I don't think that's necessary. And beyond that, no one's doing it. So that's a good rule to eliminate, I would say. Going on, another sign says, quote, unquote, no motorized scooters. Now, that's incomplete sentence. But does that mean you can take a regular scooter up there on the track? I mean, we're bidding to bring mechanized ones, but you can get it on Amazon, you can get a kick scooter for $20. Do they really want people up there with those kinds of scooters? Just asking. The last one is a rule. The rule is, consult your physician before beginning any exercise program. I think that's a suggestion, not a rule. But that's what's up there.
Thank you for your comments. We have General Manager Stephen Erno here, and I'd ask him to take those under advisement. So, and if you wanted to speak with him directly, because, sir, we don't put the signs up. It's a great place for you to declare that, though, and if you can wave... Oh, yes, sir, you were just making a comment. No, that's okay. Well, the general manager is directly behind you, right? And he's the person that can potentially make... Yeah, he can make some of the changes to signage. Well, they're all under, they're all under general manager's oversight, so... I'm sure he can handle that. Yes, Director Chatten?
The Properties Committee will be touring all of our facilities over the next month and a half. And I will make a note that we do look at the signage and see if there's anything inappropriate. So thank you for bringing that up.
And thanks, that was a great, and I, thank you, Director Chatten. So there are a number of signs that I think have been a little questioned and problematic. So I know you guys will handle that for us. Thank you, Stephen, as well. I know we do, we still have somebody at the dais, so...
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Alan Schlemmer, 137012. I just wanted to acknowledge the work of the board today and President Novella of your work as well. I think this was a very well-run and executed board meeting. I'm very pleased and excited at the diversity of opinions that were talked about today. That's what we should be doing as a board. And I respect every one of those opinions, and I appreciate the openness and the candor with which they can be presented. All of the discussion and everything now is behind us. We move forward together as one unified body to do what's in the best interest of Sun City West. And I think your opening remarks on that were very well on point. I thank all of you for your support. And all of you, I look forward to working with you. I also want to acknowledge Dennis and David, who also expressed interest, because I know both of them. I know Dennis from Torch, and I know David. One of the smart things I did just before I did a dumb thing like go play in traffic and lose was I asked David to join me on the Chartered Bubs Committee. Because I respected his opinions, his thought processes, and his knowledge, and I respect, and most importantly, his passion. And Dennis as well from Torch. I equally share that level of respect. And I appreciate Mr. Horvath's service to the board, and I wish him the best. So thank you very much. I do want to mention one other thing, sort of unrelated. As you all know, I'm sort of a little of a history buff when it comes to the Sun Cities, Sun City and Sun City West. For the last several years, Retire Better Now does a survey annually of the best top-10 retirement communities in the United States. And I've watched that. And the reason I looked to that one is because it is the one survey that's out every year. And I just saw the 2025 survey. And I was a little worried. I'm like, oh, I'm going to a meeting today. What if this is bad news? What if we're not out there? Open it up, and we remain number four in the nation of top-10 retirement communities. And we remain one space above the villages. I also want to point out that the good part of that is...
Does the, is the board okay allowing incoming director-elect?
I want to point out, the good part of this is, four of the top 10 carry either the Sun City, in three cases, or the Dell Web branding. If anyone doesn't think that name carries weight, look at that survey. Forty percent of the top 10, as we look across the street and see what they did to their name. So with that, again, thank you very much, folks. I wish you all the best in the coming year, and I look forward to joining with you. And thank all of you for your support. Have a great day.
Thank you. We have one more in the room, and then we'll go to the online comments.
Carolyn Whitfield, 115421. I just want to thank the board for getting this done today. And since I've been a member here for, lived here for 12 years and see my dues go up every year, I appreciate your getting this done today and saving us another mail-in ballot and spending all that money. Thank you.
Did you, could you, could you write it down for us when you have a chance? Thank you so much. And now we can go to online comments.
We have one comment that was a follow-up to Tim Hurley's. This comment is from Linda Campbell. She says, absolutely, experience counts. And then we have a comment from Mary Gannett, 133113. She says, I hate the feeling that this decision was made prior to the meeting starting. However, I want to congratulate Alan. I know he will do a good job.
I can assure you, the decision was not made ahead of the meeting. But I understand that you, I appreciate your feeling. It's inevitable that, you know, we've been aware as a board of the resignation and of the interest of the three gentlemen that we mentioned. We've been aware of that for quite some time. So it's inevitable that we formed some opinions ahead of time. I personally assure you that no meetings took place that you did not see today. And if you might have looked a little bit more closely, you would have seen me fumbling over some words in terms of how to move us forward to the appointment. I know that we had a lot of differences of opinion up here, but I'm proud of the fact that we expressed them. And I'm proud of the fact that we did this in an open meeting, which is not something that's typical in the past. But again, we're setting a tone here for transparency. Anything further come in since we started reading that, Director Forsy? So with that, I believe that we've, that those are the, those are all the comments. I don't believe we'll have any other director comments. And with that, we can adjourn this special meeting at 11:20 today.